I'll just share my desktop. I have one, one slide in a demo. Um, I thought it'd be useful since we spoke last time. Um, and I'm hoping that this, they, this, uh, how do I get rid of the gallery mode here? I wanna just simply get rid of that. Um, well, I'll just leave it as it is. So the only thing I really wanna say here is, um, this is the system architecture of the engine we're gonna be demonstrating. It has a declarative language API. It's integrated with Python, Java, and all the other kinds of main things. The core is that it has a graph representation. It supports conceptual graphs directly, ISO twenty four seven oh seven common logic. Um, our thesis is that you need both the neural and the symbolic side at a high level. Um, this is a brand new design for a processor. It is written as a virtual machine, so it has a complete instruction set architecture based on a theory called X machines, um, which was developed by Eiling Islandberg, um, and then used by NASA for swarm systems. Um, it has a number of solvers, uh, can take constraints. Um, it's, uh, integrates machine learning into the core of the engine because of the way it has this matrixed architecture. And it uses, um, concepts like, um, Barr's global workspace theory. So I'll just switch to a view of, you know, the fact that this is written in C, it has its own, um, instruction architecture here. And, um, you know, as part of all of that, um, there's, there's, um, a lot of different built-ins that you have as well. And if you look inside of this, you'll find that there is the workspace model in here as well. Okay, so, uh, Barr's workspace theory is is actually implemented in here as well. So there are workspaces. Um, that's a little bit about the code. That's a little bit about the, the one slide. And we now go to, I'll, I'll just run the engine very briefly. Um, so it comes in two forms. You can run it on the command line. Um, I'll get out of that, but you can also, um, run it as its own IDE. I will turn on some tools here and I'll put a very simple call member. Uh, a member of a list, an element that is a member of a list, and I'll just put, um, uh, first, first here and second. Um, and I'll close that. Um, you'll see very quickly it pops up in this window. What's cool about this engine is I can even enable instructions. Okay, and so, um, when I say continue, you will see that actually, unlike almost any other engine, this has a JIT compiler that allows you to do full round trip debugging, and there's many, many other features. Um, it has a visual interface, so this whole IDE comes with documentation and tools, all the things that you need to do, uh, fully professional development. Um, this interface was built with it. And we're gonna select a text file. Um, this text file was selected, uh, on the internet from, um, if I just go and pick, this is the source of that, and you can pick other files. It doesn't really matter. And we'll just stick with the SARS COVID two. Um, so it, it writes out the text file as text, so you can see that, um. And I really do have to get rid of this header here because I can't see my screen. It's obscuring it, which means I can't get to the menus. That's why I'm gonna do this. How do I do this? Get rid of participant view. Does anybody know what the control is? Just offhand to get rid of the.
Maybe try hiding zoom just in.
Okay, there we go. I did hide zoom. Thank you so much. So the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do something called topological data analysis on this. Okay, this is what builds what's called the scaffolding network. What is a scaffolding network? Well, if you look at a movie script or a book or any text, it's going to have a plot, a, a, a backbone, if you will, as to what's being discussed. And so, uh, this engine, the first thing it does is it digests the text to create the scaffolding network. Now, this isn't something that is useful to us, but it is a way to get signatures of a text or a style of a text. From this scaffolding, right, which is very critical, right, which has COVID nineteen, SARS COVID two, uh, vaccines and ACE two and cells, we machine create the proto ontology. And this then is now zooming in on that article. Okay, and you can see that there's this, uh, SARS COVID one uh, is a virus and we get back to what John was showing you. Okay? More interestingly, um, there are in, inside of that graph, there's any number of paths that we can follow and turn that into text as he showed you, but, um, we generate these summaries. Now, what's interesting about this, um, is we, we can ask a question. So here's one. Um, how do, I don't know, um, how do vitamins play a role in this, uh, in this article? Okay, so I can just ask a question directly. And I send that question off and it will read the article and it will tell me that vitamin D and zinc are mentioned as natural supplements that could have prophylactic benefits in the article, right? And if I wanna go back, um, and just for your, you know, uh, and just do a regular text search, right? I could say vitamin D. You'll see that it's actually vitamin D is discussed. So what's important about this is you have provenance, you have data provenance that drives the answer system through conceptual graphs of the text that, that are then eloquently phrased with the large language model. What we're working on is we're actually binding the language models with the graphical structures through a co-embedding. That means you have a symbolic structure for a knowledge graph, conceptual graph. You create that embedding space and you can now embed that embedding by articulating it into the large language model embeddings, which is given by the tensorial structure of the parameters. So we're actually working that, um, we're using some very, very neat uh, new tools, which, you know, potentially next year we'll tell you about that. But I can tell you that when you start to go down that path, it gives you an opportunity to build control models. What I mean by a control model is that, um, I can ask, for example, what is the tone? This is an early stage. What is the tone of this text? Okay? And you'll see what it says, okay? Right now it says it is impossible to, with, with only this information, right? So, um, that's harder. Let me see if I can, and, and I don't know if this will work well, but I will try it. I will go to, um, I will go to the, um, Cyrus tool. Um, I will go to find this test corpora, uh, which has coronavirus, upload it. Okay. And I'm going to ask, what is the tone? And see what it says. So this is very experimental. I don't know that it'll actually work. But it may give us an answer for what is the tone. It's now running. And so this is now, it'll take much, much longer because it's doing a lot of vector calculations. The point of this is is to figure out how we can bind things like empathy and emotion and intentionality. Okay? And so, um, it says here, the tone of this text appears to be neutral and informative as it presents a list of numbered items and references, which are typical of academic or research-based writing. Okay, now, this engine that I'm showing you is the next generation version of what we're building on our current question-answer engine, which couldn't answer the tone question. Okay? So what we have and what I'm trying to share with you is that inside this global workspace model, okay? We can have multiple viewpoints that can provide multiple assessments and perhaps even having a machine embedded in a machine may give us a kind of approximation to machine consciousness where you can start to talk about, well, can we have control knowledge to have intent? Can we have control knowledge in the form of these articulated neuro-symbolic embeddings to give us emotion, to give us the kind of empathy, to give us the kind of understanding that you can't ordinarily get from a plain old symbolically integrated system. And I think the answer is yes, you can. And this is a very early step of, of, um, that cross-embedding model, if you will. And I think, um, you know, um, if, if certainly if we wanted to go online and, and does anybody want me to do a, a live test from a URL? Anyone? Yes, no? Go for it? Okay, let's, let's see what we can pick here. Um, uh, well, let's try ontology. Okay. Um, there is this one. There is the Stanford one. There's, um, University of Warwick ontology. Uh, this one looks like it's, okay, I have to do accept all. Um, let's try this University of Warwick. Okay, I'm just gonna go there. Or do you want me to do something like, uh, I don't know, game of cricket or tennis or something? Anyone? Sounds like.
Ontology is good.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna just hit paste. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually restart this, add source. Okay, so now I have the ontology there. Okay, so this is ontology. Um, it's given a global universal ID because we use this for the graphs. This is now fully real time, so I'm gonna actually real time build a scaffolding network. Okay, and we can see it's disconnected, so there are two sections in there. Probably because there's something about the university and let's see what the ontology induction looks like. Sure, it'll be interesting. Um, and once that's done, we can ask some questions. Okay? Um, but the reason I'm showing this to you, um, the, the largest set of documents we've done is seventy million documents in the web of science. See, there's the disconnectedness. You can see that. Okay, so it's, it's still, um, many researchers deal only superficially with questions of ontology. Interesting. Hope that doesn't refer to any of us here. Um, so we'll go straight to the summary. See what it says. Um, I always find the summarization because it's based on the structure of the graph and uses in the background. It uses a technique called eigen decomposition. And, uh, it combines the ontology and the scaffolding net with the eye to direct eigen decomposition. So it says here, the text discusses the importance of ontology in social research, its relation to reality and how it influences research methodology. So then it goes on to elaborate about what it is. And then I could say, um, um, does um, are there, um, are there any discussions? Discussions about computer software implementations, right? So I can ask that. See what it says. There's no information given in the text about discussions related to computer software. And okay, let's try, um, does the text, okay, um, I'll, I'll, I'll say, I want you to invent, oh, to use, use the text as a basis to cook a tasty dish. Okay? Now, with GPT four, particularly with the four plus, you'll actually get some very nice invented answers, but let me just see what this does. Right? Uh, the given text does not provide any information that can use to cook a tasty dish. So, you know, this is very kind of like blunt and it's, it's only gonna stick to what's in there. Um, if I go to the text and I ask a question like, um, I don't know, let's just say, uh, let's go back to this one. Um, what belief sets um, uh, are discussed? If any. Okay? I'll just ask that. See what it says. It says the text discusses beliefs related to ontology and presents two different perspectives on reality. It also suggests that beliefs about ontology can be changed or crossed. Interesting. Right? So we would have to read the text to, you know, but this is a very, uh, kind of, uh, quick way to get an understanding. There are a number of, um, signal measures, um, diversity, uh, the richness of the vocabulary. Uh, you know, the FOG index, which roughly corresponds to the age. So this would require a seventeen-year-old roughly to read it. Um, and a whole bunch of other things that are calculated, like how much of the, how many terms are there that are actually latent or hidden that you would need to be an expert to understand? And, um, you know, other things like language identification, for example, which is interesting and important if you have mixed languages. Um, anyway, this is, this is essentially the, the, the demo in a nutshell. I hope you enjoyed the very fast tour. Um, I wanted to con- conclude that quickly, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, so we're gonna move to questions now. Uh, so I'm gonna go through the questions on the Soapub chat. First question is from Todd on Schneider. Does reasoning include probabilistic reasoning?
Uh, in this engine, um, we have basically, uh, graph-based reasoning that integrates um, Dempster-Schafer models, so you can turn that on or off, um, Bayesian models, you can turn that on or off. And, uh, what's called classical probability, which you can turn on and off. And complex probability, which some people call quantum-inspired reasoning. Um, but it's complex, uh, probability. So yes, in this engine it does.
Great, okay, um. Then he goes on to ask, what sorts of linguistic information?
Um, yeah, so it has, um, parts of the sumo top ontology as background knowledge. Um, we've tested out different combinations, but we find that building microtheories based on the background knowledge and a top ontology is more productive than, than trying to, for example, use a a, a detailed background ontology. So a, for example, in the case of one of our customers, uh, they had an eighty-six-page internal document on the, uh, how they do their financial, I'll say, credit assessment. And, uh, it was much more important to induce the ontology from their credit assessment and include and integrate it only with the top concepts of a top ontology, rather than take the bulk of the financial ontology, which went way off track compared to what the internal data and what the company was working with.
Actually, Todd wanted John to, um, give his answer to these two questions.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, uh, I can't see the questions. Where are they?
This was in the Soapub chat.
Oh, on.
The first one was, does reasoning include probabilistic reasoning? And the second was, what sort of linguistic information?
Okay, well, the, uh, as Aaron has just shown, uh, the, or discussed, the implementation does use several different methods of probabilistic reasoning and that in very detailed kind of ways. Uh, this is much more precise and, uh, powerful than anything that's done by, uh, GPT by itself. And and what does the?
So then the next, well, fine, the next question was from someone who was anonymous. Uh, what is your opinion about reasoning, mining, argument generation and persuasive communications?
Well, those are certainly important. And, uh, as Aaron mentioned, there are various methods that you can implement that, uh, styles of reasoning and analysis are that, are the kinds that, uh, Aaron had shown that you can look at things from the point of view of a tone or, uh, anything that you can take and define a kind of, what do you mean by this kind of reasoning? That style of reasoning can be used to, uh, say, give me the whatever it is about this particular, what, whatever kind of analysis you wanna do about a particular document or a set of documents. And in fact, the, the Aaron would probably give you more detail about that.
Yeah, and then, then, uh, Todd asked, don't transformers represent a type of knowledge graph?
Well, okay, conceptual graphs are a, uh, kind of knowledge graph that support the full ISO standard for common logic plus extensions. So the conceptual graphs are knowledge graphs. In fact, uh, we, the terminology that, uh, uh, has been used, that was dominant in the, our good old twentieth century was semantic networks. And so I said, okay, conceptual graphs are a kind of semantic network. Now people talk about knowledge graphs. So, okay, I call them knowledge graphs. And in fact, uh, I had, uh, I had given a couple of talks at the Knowledge Graph Conferences, KGC. And the slides that I am presenting today are what are an extension of ones that I prepare for the Knowledge Graph Conference.
And then, uh, Mike Bennett had a question. Mike?
It was more of an observation, really, because Jo- John was describing how GPT was used to create human readable output from the conceptual graphs. And I was just wondering out loud whether those of us that are curating more conventional ontologies and standards and so on, were always struggling to create even readable glossaries. So I'm suggesting that, based on John's experience, we could use, uh, GPT in that way, in, in that context as well.
Well, yes, the point is that, uh, that the Perion work does the precise reasoning. It also has the, as Aaron has just said, uh, it has the, uh, you, you can define something like the tone. Whatever you mean by tone, you can give a specific definition of that, and you can ask for the tone of an article. You could also define any other kind of perspective you want to ask about it. You can ask whether it's childish or sophisticated or technical or, uh, informative. You, you can, any kind of view that you want to have about a particular, uh, document can be specified. And you can say, what is the tone of the article? What is the childishness of the article? What is the sophistication? What is the technical? And it is, uh, the Perion system is capable of doing an analysis of that document and telling you, uh, uh, as one of the examples, it was, it tells you whether it's, uh, at a, what the readability score, whether it's at this, as this one document was, is it, is it the seventeen-year-old stage that you must, you but, but must have the education of somebody, uh, junior in high school uh, would be qualified to read that, or junior in high school or better. So we.
Yeah, this is a, a little different. Um, can you use GPT to generate in, or, or your system to generate human readable text?
Yes.
I mean, that's what you seem to be doing.
Yes, we do. We, we, we're actually looking at, um, uh, cross-document rhetorical structures as an organizing principle, uh, under the hood. Again, this uses, uh, conceptual graphs and allows you to create um, much in the same way as people create, uh, interactive fiction with primitives, right? So you have, for example, um, you know, there's a whole body of text on the structure of fairy tales, right? Um, and you, you can look at the, what are called prop functions, P R O P P. Uh, you know, also the work of Bruno Bettelheim and the, you know, uh, power, uh, nature of enchantment. You know, there are twenty, uh, functions about how you write a story. So yes, of course, um, that's really exciting when you combine that with literature-based discovery because now you have not just analysis, you have synthesis. And this is where, um, you could actually generate intellectual property. So it's very, very exciting. And yes, we are researching that.
And then, uh, Bob had a question. Why aren't emotions just another aspect of the context? Maybe part of the why in who, what, when, where, why, how of context?
Yeah, so we were researching that. So the, the, the problem with emotion, uh, you know, anything that has a subjective evaluation like tone, right? Um, it comes from the cultural context of the people or the culture or the civilization that has its, um, viewpoint about tone. So what we're doing is, as I said, we're looking at these embedding spaces from a neuro and symbolic standpoint. So that we have attribution of where the meaning of that statement came from, right? Not just, okay, the machine generated it because we gave it a bunch of sentiment words, right? Something like as, as, as trivial as that. Um, what we're exploring is how does the structure of that space relate to the structure of intelligence? And how does intelligence relate to knowledge? Right? Like you may have, you know, two different computer agents and one may use the knowledge much more efficiently to solve a problem compared to another. And so you could potentially say this reasoning agent is acting more intelligently, right?
Emotion.
I was gonna say.
Emotion.
There, there was a question that just appeared on the screen just briefly, and it asked about how the, whether, but it asked about knowledge graphs. And the point that, uh, I make is that uh, conceptual graphs are a very detailed, precise form of knowledge graph. So any knowledge graph can be mapped into a conceptual graph. Or in other words, that the knowledge graphs usually do not have the full power of common logic, but conceptual graphs can be used in a very vague sort of way, or they can used in a way that's as pre- precise as common logic plus extensions to, uh, meta-language and other relationships that aren't in, even in common logic.
Yeah, and I see Ram Sriram, uh, asked that question. So with respect to Perion, we are studying it, as I mentioned, by these, these co-embeddings, right? How do you have a conceptual graph embedding and a GPT embedding? How do you create that scaffolding, right? And so we've actually created that scaffolding and it's in that articulation of the sta- scaffolding that we've now been experimenting with things like tone, sentiment, emotion. And then the open question is, could one have a facsimile of consciousness where you have, as in Minsky's model, an A-brain observing a B-brain observing an A-brain, right? Does that get you there? We don't know the answer yet. We're still working on it.
Well, actually, there was a question from a Phil, whether GPT can talk to itself.
I see there's a he- a hand up there that Alexei Moravitsky has a hand up.
Well, yeah, I'm going through the questions in order on the.
Oh, fine. Okay, yeah, sure, okay.
So these are older questions. Um, so, yeah. Could GPT talk to itself?
Um, only if you are driving it, uh, under a, a goal or a plan. Um, so we actually do have a planning system that's running in the background that generates plans that the engine is actually using. Uh, um, and so let me, uh, let me, just, just so you can see my, my screen, I'll share it briefly, because I think this is always fun to look at. Um, so if you see my screen here, it says running plan. Okay, there's where it's running plans for goals. And, um, you can actually have plans triggering plans internal to the system. So yes, it can actually prompt engineer itself or talk to itself.
That's great. Then moving on, um, I guess the next one was Gary. Gary? Gary asked a question about, uh, asked asked to use something that involves agents with intentions? Gary? Still there, Gary?
I'm, I'm here. Well, that was sort of a suggestion when Arun was asking about what type of text we should look at. We ended up looking at ontology. I was just thinking that maybe something involving agent interactions and intentionality might have been a fun thing to do. So maybe for next time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Gary. And you know, you guys can always reach out to us, you know, independently to ask us to look at or explore, figure out collaborations or ways that we can explore stuff. Um, I don't know of many companies that are integrating the neural and the symbolic in the way that we're doing it. I know people blew them together, but I'm not I'm not entirely sure people are taking the same approach from instruction set architecture all the way up.
Yeah, there was also a question about, um, Phil about can you ask the system what it knows or thinks about itself?
Yes, I did send a direct message to Phil, uh, answering that question as the system answered it to me. So I did ask it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I actually recall some person who asked ChatGPT to uh, a legal type question. And it came back with all kinds of citations to cases and so on. And then he, he then said, are you sure that all of these are in fact correct? So it's asking a question about what it knew about itself. And it said, yes, indeed, all of these are correct. Then he proceeded to check and every one of the cases that it cited were made up. So it didn't know itself at all.
Yeah, that hallucination and confabulation, I put my email in case anybody wants to reach out to me. Um, that's something that doesn't happen with our engine at all. As I was trying to illustrate, I was trying to you know, like with the example with tone, right? I wanted to show you that once you geared it really tightly to the data, it's, it's not going to get into that. And that's why we had another engine running where we're experimentally looking at these types of much more interesting uh, explorations, but without the confabulation and the uh, you know, hallucination, if you will.
Uh, maybe we can get to Alexa's question. Your hand has went up.
Uh, my question is to John. Uh, well, thank you for your impressive presentation. Um, but my question is about a capability of a Permeon. Uh, uh, slide 40 in the reads that uh, Permeon uses logic with modality and high order logic. Uh, do you distinguish uh, logical language? Or do you mean uh, by modality and high order logic? Do you mean uh, machinery? Or particularly systems? Uh, or it just uh, model my language with modalities and uh, quantifiers or functions, you know, pretty good.
Okay. Well, that gets into a huge amount of work uh, and debates about how to handle modal logic. And the basis uh, that we prefer that Aaron and I both were working on this project called Icarus, that was uh, sponsored uh, by the same, by a slightly different group from the ones that did sponsor the uh, the semantic network, that Tim Berners-Lee had a much broader no view of a logic than what happened to the semantic network, that his original view, he had this logic called swell semantic web, a semantic web of logic language. And that was a very general logic. And the, his intention was to have a, a much richer logical foundation than one actually happened. And this was a big debate that was happening on the Ontolog Forum, that the idea of decidability really devastated the research on logic that narrowed it down to a very, very tiny aspect. And that what was delivered finally as a final product was just a fraction of the logical requirements that were specified in Tim, Tim Berners-Lee's original proposal. Now, there was a later project called Icarus, which produced an interoperable knowledge language, IKL, which is an extension of common logic that has uh, the operation of modal reasoning. And with modal reasoning, or sorry, I mean, operation of meta-language. And with meta-language, it is possible to do all of the kinds of modality, an open-ended variety of modalities. In fact, not just possibility and necessity, but getting into wishing and thinking and hoping and fearing and the uh, the overwhelming number of kinds of modes. And just the simple modal logic is not really used in uh, computer systems at all. It's just so, such a fragmented, tiny subset of logic that it's not really practical for any purpose. But the modal, but the meta-level reasoning is extremely important. And the, the old Vivo Mind uh, company and the current Permeon company can do the meta-level reasoning uh, very, in a very important way. And common logic is a very rich logic that includes uh, all of common logic plus that meta-level extension. And meta-level reasoning is far and away more important than any kind of modal reasoning. And Aaron, do you have anything further to say?
Yeah, so we, we actually um, handle a very, very sophisticated kind of higher order logic. Um, and I can give you a very simple example here. I'll just instantiate a variable and I'll say something like A of B of C of D with K. And then I'll make A unitive with um, um, F X Y and uh, G, uh, Q of, of P, okay? Uh, something like this. Um, now this kind of uh, structure is very difficult. Uh, right? So this structure, you could not do that in a conventional language today. But not only can I do that, but I can also, um, you know, um, assert like in prologue, I could say meta. Uh, and just assert G, and I'll call it my, um, I'll call it number one and I'll assert G, right? And uh, if I do meta and I go one and I say X, right? It brings back the fully variabilized form and I can do unification on that. Now that is something that um, I don't know of any engine that does that today because that's beyond high log, right? So we use what's called patterned directed and data-oriented higher order logic programming uh, within our engine. So it's a completely new design, as I said.
Yes. And I'd like to add the comment that this kind of reasoning is, has immense practical applications. The standard kind of uh, logic, the, the kind of modal logic where you just have possibility and necessity, that is so weak that there's really nothing you can do with it. It's, it no, but that a lot of people implement programs that can run those things. But none of those programs are ever used for any practical applications. They're never used for analyzing language. They're never used for reasoning on the semantic web or on any other system. It modal logic by itself is just a dead end as far as practical applications. However, the meta-language option, in fact, this is what Quine said. Uh, Quine said, you don't need modal logic, you just need meta-language and meta-language does it. However, Quine never uh, showed exactly how you could do that. But uh, the, the, the research that has been done with meta-level reasoning is far and away superior to anything you do with any kind of modal logic.
Uh, I have another question. Do, uh, do you care about uh, backtracking?
Yes, we handle backtracking. We have um, actual uh, multiple backtracking models, including neural driven backtracking.
Thank you.
Do we have an earlier question from Marc Antoine? Can you say more about graph embedding for common logic?
Sure. Um, so graph embeddings for common logic use um, graph to vector with constraints. So what we had to do is, is build a model on top of the current graph embedding models. And we're exploring that articulation space and how we restrict it uh, or control the control knowledge around it to have much more powerful uh, unification operators. Um, unification is a general purpose tool and unification um, can serve many, many purposes. So fuzzy unification, soft unification, neural unification. These are all different uh, kind of angles of that question. Um, we don't have an answer right now, but as I mentioned, this is exactly the kind of the bleeding edge of what we're working on.
And does your GPT have a sense of self?
No, it does not. We are exploring building an A-brain, B-brain model with uh, with um, the embedding articulation so that we can have viewpoint and tone and maybe something like consciousness. I don't know if that's even a good facsimile or a good word. Um, but yeah, you want to, you want to combine, you know, you certainly want at your endpoint, not, we don't have this today. But what we want is meta-meta programming for meta-reasoning so that there's a level of self-introspection, self-correction, if you will, under policies of acceptable conduct, behavior, morality and ethics. Right? Um, and something that's deterministic, because you don't want a system to guess if it's controlling a self-driving car, whether it should hit the child or not at the crossing, right? That should not be a guess.
Right. And by the way, this is an example of why modal logic by itself is just hopelessly too weak. There's no version, no popular formal, formally defined system of modal logic that could do any of this kind of reasoning. But with meta-level reasoning, you can expand it to an immense kind, immense range of different times, styles, kinds and styles of reading. And other, and another point about uh, knowledge graphs, every knowledge graph can be represented in a conceptual graph very, very easily. But uh, there is much more in conceptual graphs. So it's a much richer kind of logic which has, which is much richer than any other kind of knowledge graph that people ever talk about.
Yeah, so like I see Marc Antoine here um, asked more about the meta-reasoning. And so really, our approach is equational logic. Right? Where you have the left-hand side and the right-hand side. And then what you have is policies and constraints that govern how the unification occurs. Um, so that you're not doing it at the literal first order logical level, but you're giving the soft constraints for it to conduct unification. I hope that answers Mark's question. And then I see Gary has his hand up.
Jack Park.
Yes, I have my hand up from, from an earlier discussion on whether ChatGPT has this, what it thinks about itself or has a sense of self. As I understand the architecture, we get mis, uh, we get misdirected by the idea that we're engaging in a conversation with something that has some of these higher level abilities. So as I understand it, the architecture doesn't allow it to learn anything during the session itself. It's pre-trained. Um, so we, there's so many aspects of the cognitive system that John uh, described that are missing in this that would have to be added for it to develop some of these abilities like having an idea about itself and its abilities.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, Gary. And that's again, you know, an area where this A-brain, B-brain research is going.
So Jack Park has his hand up on the chat room. But is Jack still here?
Uh, yeah, and I did not know that I had a hand up.
You had your hand up. Okay, um. Is your reasoning holistic?
Uh, it's, it's another model of reasoning. So you can add that to the system because the system is a general, it's a Turing complete language for programming. We have not added holistic reasoning to this at this point. Um, we've been still working with our ABCs, if you will. Uh, so we do have probabilistic Bayesian and, you know, complex probabilistic. Uh, and certainly we have constraint logics and finite domains. We don't have holistic today, but that doesn't mean we can't.
And if your reasoning is recursive, how do you unwind?
Yeah, so we keep a stack and you can set the depth. Um, it depends on whether the recursion um, is linear or classical. If it's linear recursion, it will, it will halt on the consumption of data. Unless you're generating an infinite stream, in which case you generate infinitely lazily, right? So as people ask, you give them answers forever. Um, but for example, um, you know, uh, generating, I don't know, a sequence of random numbers or the next Fibonacci number, right? Would be, can be lazily generated as a stream generator. So that could be infinite.
So there's, there's been a lot of concern that AI is dangerous and should be stopped. And it should be some kind of regulation.
Uh, yeah.
What do you think of all that?
I think that's like the discussion of Q in Congress or Q in Star Trek or some other quasi-thick religious uh, kind of position. I don't know. I, I'm the worst person to ask about that.
Yeah, the point I would make is, the point I would make is very simple. Don't use GPT, use Permeon. The Permeon system has very strict controls over everything. You can tell it whether you want to use strict uh, classical logic, or you want to use uh, some, any kind of uh, probabilities. There are a whole range of probabilities, there's a whole range of meta-level talking. Permeon can assign any kind you want. And GPT cannot. So my recommendation is to scrap GPT and just use Permeon.
Okay, so with that, I believe we've covered all the questions. Um, Ram, wait, Ram, you had your hand up? Ram? I Ram, are you still there?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think there's some problem with my system here. So now the question, I guess, is not so much, I think, John, uh, your advice to use Permeon is good, but people are talking about these rogue AI systems. What will eventually happen is that, because I guess Ken mentioned about all the inaccurate results these are producing. So we call it a stupid AI. And this, one of the systems can trigger like automatically the what they're scared about is that there's one of these, maybe a ChatGPT-like system in the future. Uh, not, something like that will go and hack into some nuclear reactor and go blow up the whole thing. So what do you do with that? And that's what people are talking about, regulating AI, just like you regulate nuclear reactors. And that's what Sam Altman and other people are claiming right now. I don't know.
Yeah, well, what I would say is you don't have to use Permeon, but what the, uh, this talk has just shown is that the kind of stuff that Permeon does with GPT is to provide all the controls they want. So you can, if the, if the Congress passes a law that you must be able to uh, track down every source of reasoning, every source of information that went into any particular reasoning, Permeon can do that. If it, if it says you're not allowed to talk about things like this that are uh, dangerous or pornographic or whatever, well, the Permeon system has the way to evaluate and check and trace the sources. It can say whether something is coming from some hacker, often uh, who knows where uh, versus uh, some well-documented the system, you can do that with the Permeon technology. So I'm not saying that this is the only technology, but it's a, it's a classic example that shows exactly what can and cannot be done. So all of the people who are saying that the current AI is dangerous, namely GPT, well, we're recommending Permeon and we're saying that it's not just our, our system. We are showing that this, these are the kinds of constraints that are possible. So this is possible. It's been done. And what these people are passing laws about, they can just say, well, we want you to do the kind of things that have already been done. You can do it yourself a different way, but as long as you provide that capability, we know that it can be done.
Thank you.
Great. And with that, we will adjourn. Thanks to John and Aaron for a really fantastic introduction to the subject. Wonderful demos. Looking forward to hearing still more from both of you about your system. And so we will now adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone.